Hey, everybody. Hey, everybody. Welcome to Osceola Young Democrats Spill the Tea. I am your secretary slash host, co-host, Lee Wright.
Hello, everyone. My name is Dori Diaz. I am the president of the Osceola Democrats and we are still making, having a good time trying to get this right. So, thank you for your patience.
And we're being joined today by Kissimmee City Commissioner, or the candidate for city commissioner for Kissimmee, seat five, Alvin Codner. Welcome, Alvin. How are you doing this morning?
I'm grateful as always. I can't be, um, I can't be any Debbie Downer. I can't be doubtful. I can't be complaining. I'm overly grateful to be live. So, you know, I'm here and I'm, I'm excited for tonight, I guess.
Yes, we are so glad to have you here as, um, city commissioner. Now, I see you sipping on something.
I am.
What is that?
This is, of course, is, you know, this is spill the tea. So, I'm over here, um, drinking, well, I drink, I drink tea actually every morning. Peppermint tea with a ginger tamarack with sugar and honey. So, that's, that's the tea that I drink, uh, every morning to get my day started, so.
Yeah, that sounds really like, uh, I'll wake you up.
Oh, yeah, it gets you right.
And turmeric has like a lot of benefits of immunity, correct?
It sure does. It sure does.
I like to drink a turmeric with milk sometimes when I'm, when I want to sleep at night.
I heard of that. I never tried it before, but I heard, I heard a lot of people doing that as well.
Yeah, awesome. Well, thank you. I have a cup of water. I had my, um, a little bit of coffee with, well, I'm, I'm right now, I'm currently, if everybody knows my viewers, I'm currently living at my grandmother's house, which is awesome. This is awesome. My house is under renovations right now, but this is awesome because, um, she makes me café con leche and I love it. Love it, love it, love it. That's I've been waking up lately. So, I've had some tea in a little bit. I usually make tea at my house because I clipper from my garden, so.
That is a nice perk of living with grandma, of being able to drink that café con leche, for sure.
So.
I'm rocking the unsweet tea out of a mason jar, St. Cloud style.
Hey.
I'd call it in that mason jar, I bet.
Yeah, I like it cold. Uh, so, uh, how, so Aide Mubarak for all of our Muslim friends out there. Uh, this is Aide Al Fatiir. I'm, I'm just, I'm learning. I'm constantly learning. Aide Al Fatiir is the end of Ramadan. And, uh, it just happens to fall on today in 2020. And then, uh, happy early Memorial Day for everybody out there celebrating.
Thank you, Lee.
There's a Memorial Day.
Thank you, Lee. Thank you, Lee. So, this is spill the tea and the whole purpose of this is to get to know our candidates who are running. They're going to be showing up on the August 18th primary elections. So, you are running for Kissimmee, city commissioner, seat five, AKA mayor. Is that how it is? Is that, am I right on that?
Yeah, that's correct. That, that's absolutely right. C5.
So, what, now, this one has a lot of opponent, like a lot of Democratic candidates in here too, who are, who are, who are running. So, what does this office do? Who can vote for you? Can you expand more on that position, please?
Right, yes. So, the city, uh, city commissioner, seat five is the mayor seat. The mayor seat, the people who can vote for that seat, you have to be located within the city limits. So, I know that a lot of people may kind of get it twisted if they live in Point Sienna, but they have an address that says Kissimmee. Um, anything outside, anything past Pleasant Hill and John Young is outside of, um, city hill, city limits, sorry. And then, um, anything past the loop on John Young is, is outside of city limits. Anything go, if you're going down 192 east and west, anything past medieval times is outside of city limits. And anything past the turnpike going, going towards St. Cloud, um, on 192 is pa, is, is outside of the city limits. So, if you live outside of that, then you can't vote for, uh, for me or anyone on the city, city Kissimmee ballot. Or our name shouldn't, I don't believe it would show up even on the, on your ballots if you live outside of the city limits. So, um, only you can, um, those who live within the city can vote for their mayor's seat. And I'm sorry, what was the other question you asked towards that?
What does that office do? What, what?
Oh, right.
And why do you want to run for that office?
Right, right. So, yeah, so the city commission is over, um, basically all the, well, not, the city commission not over all the departments because the city manager is actually handling the day-to-day operations in city hall. But the city commission, which is the mayor and four other city commissioners, is over the city manager, the deputy city manager, um, and the city attorney and those people who are over all each department, fire department, police department, finance department, et cetera, all the departments within the city hall, Parks and Recs and et cetera. And, uh, but basically, the city commission would, you know, meet twice a month and they have several other meetings, workshop meetings, budget meetings, where they pass, um, city ordinances, they approve or disapprove city ordinances. If a certain department wants to spend a certain threshold of money out of the budget, they have to get it approved. Um, if it, if it passes a certain threshold, if it doesn't pass a certain threshold, they go to the city manager, whatever it should be. But, um, but yeah, that's what, this is just, I mean, of course, city commissioners do a lot, but that's kind of just, just what they do. But for me, I just want, me personally, while I'm running is not, nothing out of the ordinary for me. I've always been a public servant. I don't want to run for, I'm not running to be the mayor of, per se, of the city because the mayor in Kiss, in the former government of city of Kissimmee, the former government is council manager. So, it's very much so different than Orlando, which is strong mayor, former government, which is where Buddy Dyer is, has been the mayor for so long now. I don't know how long he's been the mayor, probably about 13 years now, but Buddy Dyer, he has veto power. He's, it's kind of like his last word, um, stands. Um, here in Kissimmee, council manager, the mayor doesn't have veto power. It has to be a three-two vote for anything, a third's vote to, for anything to pass or not pass. So, the mayor, it's a weak mayor, former government, council manager, to where the point that the actual mayor doesn't really have much power, per se, that's, it still has to be a three-two vote. Um, he still can get voted out, he or she, sorry, can still get voted out. And, um, so the position or the title really doesn't really mean anything for me. I just want to make it easier for me to continue to be a public servant that I already am. So, like for the past 10 years, I'm always doing community work, nonprofit work, volunteerism, et cetera. So, everything that I'm doing, like even the whole campaigning aspect is nothing different from what I've been doing for the past 10 years. So, it's like, the only thing, the, the, one of the main reasons why I want to get in office is so it's a lot easier for me to get things done in a faster rate. So, just a quick example, if I wanted to meet with the city manager, I had to book a meeting a month, two months ahead of time in order to meet with them to ask only a few questions. But if I'm in office, I could just say, hey, like, knock on the door, let's, you know, and do this, that and the third. So, it just makes it a lot easier. Not saying that I can't get the job done because I still get things done as a civilian, but, or, as a, as a, as a resident here, but it just makes things a lot smoother, easier for me if I'm in office. But, uh, but yeah, so, that's what.
Okay, so, so Alvin, tell us, what, what are you doing now? Um, what are you doing now to this point that has led you, right? I'm going to do this campaign right now, but what have you been doing now? What, what, what experience do you have in with public servants?
Right, yeah, um, well, like I was saying, for the, you know, for the past 10 years, I, I've been working in a field that either was serving the community or serving the youth. So, I work for the city of Kissimmee, Parks and Recs. I work for Osceola County, Parks and Recs. I work for, um, the juvenile justice department for the state. I worked for the YMCA Youth and Teen Development Center, up in, when I was living in Atlanta, Georgia. I worked, uh, various numbers of nonprofits, you know, as well as in, in different cities, New Orleans, San Francisco, uh, California, Atlanta, Georgia, and all these places I was always doing work with, going towards the community. Um, I also am, currently, I'm a teacher right now. I'm an educator and I was working in school district for a while as well. Um, I was a program coordinator out there in New Orleans with the school, connecting the schools, schools in the school district with the community that they're serving and stuff like that. Um, so I was always doing stuff in the community and that's, I think that's what being a public servant is. Being one who is doing for others, being one who is connecting, uh, people and finding resources for other people who may not be able to find it on their own and providing them the tools to do it by themselves instead of you just giving or telling them. So, that's what I've been doing for the past 10 years. So, that's why I said, uh, and I'm also, I mean, I went to school for also the past 10 years. I grad, I graduated high school in 2008 and I just graduated my last graduate school in 2018 from FAU. So, I got my, I have my associates in general studies. I have my bachelor's in fine arts. I have my master's in positive psychology and then I have my master's in nonprofit management, which is under the public administration umbrella over there at Florida Atlantic University. And that's kind of where I got, um, where one of my mentors, one of my advisors at FAU was telling me based off kind of my, my research papers that I was doing, um, there, he was saying, yeah, you know, you, you should really get into local government. You should get into, you know, you should check that out in that field because you have a good, uh, niche or niche, however you want to say it, for, uh, giving back and community work and stuff like that. So, you know, that's, that's my experience. I think I'm fairly well-rounded. I've worked for the state, county, city, also multiple different nonprofit profits and also multiple different, um, in, in different areas, right, in different cities to where I've seen what they did in New Orleans. I've seen what they did in Atlanta. I've seen what they did in San Francisco. And I'm going to take a lot of their ideas that I seen and bring it to Kissimmee, Florida, just like how we all have. You know, there's a homeless issue in every city, big city at least, um, especially in New Orleans and San Francisco and Atlanta. And a lot of things that they're doing there, uh, we're not doing here in Kissimmee. So, I feel like I can bring those ideas. And even if I don't win, I'm, I'm all about, uh, bringing up the ideas, period. Like, it doesn't matter if I win or not, as long as somebody addresses the issue. So, throughout my whole campaign, it's about, hey, here's my ideas. Um, I can really careless who wins. I, my name doesn't have to be on it. Like, I just want the, uh, uh, the issues addressed. So, that's what I'm all about through, I think my experience, you know, just shows for the past 10 years, you can see there's really, there would be no difference if you were to go down my timeline of my social media. From me campaigning to before campaigning, but oh no, it's been the same thing, community work, back to back. So, I think I'm very well-rounded with kinds of experience, per se. And I know about city, um, ordinances and stuff like that. I'm a, I'm a board member for the Kissimmee Charter School, um, over there and, and, uh, Imagine Schools Kissimmee Charter. I'm a board member over there. In the same way we run meetings over there, it's the same way you run a meeting in the city hall meeting. I'm a parliamentarian, I'm a parliamentarian as well, or another club, um, in Orange County, so. Uh, yeah, I think.
I think, I think it's interesting that you, um, it's, you were naming all this experience because I think that's very valuable. And just because, I don't explain, um, I think young people, I'm just going to say for, for myself, people underestimate because we're young, we don't have this experience in order to help people. And you're actually one of the youngest candidates who are running. Um, so I want to know more about, we are the Osceola Democrats. How do you plan on attracting young Democrats in, um, Kissimmee to vote for you? Um, and you, you as a young person too, um, to vote for you and bring that. So, I really am glad that you said all the experience that you have in public service because some people under, under, underestimate us young people for that. So, thank you.
They do. That, that's true. No, I appreciate it. Um, and, and that's really the goal. I think being the, uh, kind of being the leader of, of, uh, leading by example, I would say. So, like, I, I am a young person. I've been doing all this work in my twenties. So, from soon as I turned, I graduated, I really started doing a lot of community work when I hit 21, 22. When I was getting my, in Atlanta, I was just getting my bachelor's. Um, so throughout my timeline for the, from 22 to 28, uh, I was really everywhere, doing, uh, any type of community work, giving back to the homeless, feeding the homeless, whatever it could be, um, picking up trash, um, community cleanup, beautification, stuff like that. And the young, the, not only my peers, right, the millennials, the, those who were born in 1990, my peers were following me as well, but also the kids that, that I worked in, uh, Parks and Recs with, the city, uh, over there, at Chambers Park, I used to work there. Um, those kids, they used to look up to me because I was their camp counselor, right? Or even the teachers, well, me as a teacher, I mean, and my students, my middle schoolers, they look up to me because I was their teacher. Uh, but they didn't just see justice, a teacher, because I can, they're like, oh, how old are you? I'm like, oh, I'm 20, 26, like that, like that, 26, 25. Wow, you're, you're the youngest I ever had or whatever it could be. And then I start to show them, like, yeah, I do this as well, like, you know, I have my own clothes in line. I make videos. I, you know, I could dance like y'all, like I do every, it's something that, it's something about what the young people is, um, being adaptable, being, to be able to identify with that person. And, uh, now that I'm, I'm 29, 30 now, those kids that I used to take care of when I was 22, 23, they're 18, 19 now. So, now with the, the, I think the fact that I've been around the youth so much, that I was always going back to the high schools. I was always going back to the middle schools back here. Um, they're able to identify with me. A lot of the young people, when I ask them, why don't you get involved civically? Um, or why didn't you get involved in politics? Why don't you vote? They stay, they don't, I, they, they, they don't, they feel like they don't understand. They say that the, the, the old, the older people, like, oh, the old people who's in, who's politician, they don't understand what we got going on. And I, I try to explain to them, like, yeah, they may not understand, but you also got to reach out to them and kind of elaborate what's going on. But every time, they'll stay, every time we reach out, they just say, oh, no, you're too young, you're too, you don't, you don't get it. You need to grow up some more, da, 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 da. So, they already have this bad, uh, they have this bad, uh, taste in their mouth when they talk to older people from whoever the past older person was that said, hey, you're, you're too young, whatever it could be. So, they just stuck in that, well, we're going to be the young people. We're just going to go by our rules and stuff like that. So, I think that's going to be a ma, a play a major key of why the young people, those who were born in the nineties, uh, 95, they're, they're gonna, they're gonna lean towards me because they can identify with me. Um, and I'm right in the middle, like, so in the average age of Kissimmee is age 32. And, um, that's the average age in the city of Kissimmee. So, I already have the average, I, I am of the average age. And, you know, I'm the average person. I still live in a regular one-bedroom apartment. I'm still going through the same struggles. I'm not rich. I'm not established. I'm not old and I have a house and stuff like that. Like, I'm not, I'm, I'm, I'm living the average day-to-day 30-year-old millennial struggle, which we all, I think majority of a lot of, of the millennials are going through. So, they're able to identify with me and then I, I'm also not a career politician, like I'm not one of those. You know, I've, I've been doing all the community work. People know who I am. People know what I'm doing. So, the young people, not only can they identify with me, they can also trust me because they know I'm not doing this to get their vote. They know I'm doing things just to get a young vote. I'm young with them, you know what I'm saying? I'm going through the same struggles. So, um, there are a lot of, I get a lot of my votes, a lot of people that either campaign with me or they, they publicly, you know, promote me or endorse me, per se. They're all young. They're all ages, between the ages 22, 23 to 40, 38, between that age range. That's, that's my made most support. And I have older people too as well because a lot of older people do want to, some, something, I say a lot, but some older people do want to see more young people get engaged, civically engaged. And when they see me, they, they like how I carry myself and stuff like that. So, I do have a lot of older, well, followers and supporters as well. The majority of my supporters are my age, age 30, or like between 22, 25, up to about 35, 38. That's, that's the majority of my, my followers right now.
Alvin, I'm so glad that you brought up the, the median age or the average age in Kissimmee being 32. Um, because when we were going to start Osceola Young Democrats, we saw that as like, you know, a big group in Osceola County. We are a huge cohort. Um, and you, you already talked about your experience and, and why that matters as an elected official, but, and I'm like, I'm actually going to follow up and, and ask you. Um, do you think that's an experience, the younger experience, the youth experience and, and what we go through? Do you think that's an experience that's missing in local government?
Yes, and I'm glad you asked that question because, but when you think about it, when you think about a commission, right? When you look at a commission, you try to look up, you try to say, well, that commission represents the city, right? So, when I look at commissions, I like seeing, one, I like seeing different races, right? I like seeing a white person, an Hispanic person, a black person and whoever else is within that community, you know, it may, it makes more sense that, okay, well, at least in the ra, on the race side, because on, on my, on, a part of my campaign, I want to close gaps. That's my, that's my main thing is closing gaps. So, of course, we always have a race gap. We have an age gap and we have a, a gender gap. Those are, I think, the three biggest gaps I think we have in, in society as a whole, on, on general. So, when it comes to that, the commission, like city Kissimmee, I mean, there's always, there's usually Hispanic, which is majority of Kissimmee, uh, 73, 74, somehow percent is, is Hispanic. So, it's always usually a Kissimmee, um, commissioner. There are female women commissioners. There are male commissioners. Um, there is a black commissioner now on, on the, on the commission. Uh, you know, so that's, there, there's a, there's diversity in race, but there's never, when it comes, and, and also gender, males and women. When it comes to age, you don't see, you know, you know, the, the youngest I know right now, um, in Osceola County as a whole, uh, is, is Keith Trace over there at St. Cloud. That's the, that's the youngest, not, per, person, uh, commissioner I know. I think he's like 35, uh, or, or so. But, um, but yeah, so I think that, that the age is, is nothing, something that also needs to be diversified because, uh, on a commission, because those people on the commission, there's nothing against old people. I, I learned a lot of my wisdom from old people and et cetera, the elderly. But when you say, when you say, how can they relate to when they're two decades above you? You're not going to be able to kind of engage them to, to do things for the, for the, for the city. So, with me being on the commission, at least they will have a young person's perspective that's on the dais, that's speaking, well, here's how the young people will feel. Here's how I took it. Here's how the even younger people, the, the, the younger, um, kids below me, those who are 20, 19, 18. You still have to serve them too, even though, you know, they, they, they're in school and they're, they're getting some, majority of them should be getting taken, taken care of their parents. But they're still a part of your population. Uh, and as, as city commissioners, I think that, like, for me growing up, I think, I want to say Jim Swan was the mayor when I was in elementary, middle school, maybe. But I never seen, I never knew about Jim Swan until I came back and started getting into local politics. You know what I'm saying? Like, I never, no, no mayor ever came to my school, no city commit, I, I don't remember it growing up. But I feel like those who are leaders should kind of be out there and be, and especially for the youth, like have them, have them be able to look up to somewhere. Like, for me, firstly, I know I'm going to go back into schools, me being a teacher, of course, I'm going to go back and volunteer in the schools and stuff like that. And also have, let these kids know, like, hey, you don't have to be just this thing. Like, you don't have to be just a, a basketball player, a football player. You don't, you don't have to be just whatever. You could be a, you could be a local politician. You could be a mayor. You could be a lawyer, a doctor, whatever it could be. But I will be, I'll be doing my do, uh, my, 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 uh, uh, I'll be doing justice, per se, to the youth people, uh, to the young people, going back to the schools and letting them know, like, that you don't have to be super old to be in this position. I think that's what's key. So, I think being able to bridge that gap that I'm, we're in the medium age, age 30, 32. And you're, I'm old enough to understand the elderly and understand what they're talking about and what they're going through. And I'm also not too, um, old enough. I'm still close to the younger people, the 18-year-olds, 17-year-olds. And with the experience that I have being a teacher and a camp counselor and all that stuff, I know how to connect with kids in certain ways as teachers. And as you know, you're a teacher as well, you, we know how to, when you're working with K through 12, or, well, I work in middle school, so I got sixth, seventh, eighth grade. But when you have a classroom with several different kids who have several different learning, um, styles, whatever it could be, you have to diversify your lesson. It could be the same lesson, but you have to change it up. So, as a teacher, I have that ability to go ahead and teach city ordinances to, to, to younger people, you know, and, and not have to have all the, um, the professional or, um, political jargon. It could be direct, I could, it could be switched up and directed to where they will want to learn it and want to take it in and want it to be bland. Because no, you know, kids are not going to go to the city hall and, and sit at a city hall meeting, you know? But I'll be able to create videos and be able to, you know, go to them and gear it to them to where they understand and what they can do as kids, um, now at that age, you know, and be able to break it down. So, yeah.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I appreciate, um, your voice and, and being, you know, a younger generation voice in the race. And I think that's important. I think that's part of the reason why, you know, young people aren't voting and we have to convince them to vote is they don't see themselves represented. And, um, you know, another thing, um, that we did as Osceola Young Democrats is, we came up with a platform to like, really have elected officials acknowledge some of these issues we care about. And, um, you know, but prior to COVID-19, you know, Osceola is a growing county. I mean, people want to move here with all the theme parks and attractions and stuff. And there's a lot of opportunity for younger families and for people to go to school. But affordable housing was an issue prior to COVID-19. And, you know, now, the social distancing and stuff, uh, and, you know, unemployment rates going up and all this stuff, it's even more up in the air with affordable housing. So, wh, as a, a candidate for city commission, what is something you can do to propose to fix affordable housing moving forward?
Well, well, affordable housing, and, and this is coming from, this is coming from like personal experience. So, I was homeless before, like for eight months, right? And I'll consider myself transitional homeless. So, I was homeless out there in San, San Francisco, California. If you know about San Francisco, California, they have a way far worse, um, homeless scenario, situation than we do in Kissimmee, Florida. Um, the, the one bedroom out there was a studio, one bedroom was, um, 3,500 average in 2015. And I was only making, I was only making $2,000 a month. So, I'm already $1,500 short on a studio. And when it comes to everything out there, you know, trying to get on, even trying to get section eight, the waiting list is a two-year waiting list. Um, even if I was, even if, uh, I made the rent, even I made 3, 3,500 a month, you had to make three times the rent. So, you, you still, even on the application, you still get denied. The only thing that I could afford was senior home. I'm not 55 plus and et cetera. So, I, I've been through the whole struggles of being homeless, sleeping in my car. I have, I only have my car. So, I was grateful enough to have my car. But I was sleeping in my car for, um, eight months. And I learned a lot through, through that. Luckily, I was educated. Like, there's different forms of being homeless, right? Because, uh, you could be uneducated homeless, which is where a lot of people struggle at and they don't know where to get resources at. But luckily, I was educated. I had three degrees, but I was homeless, you know, at the time. Uh, so I knew how to go to city hall. I know how to apply for food stamps and, and find, figure out different, um, financial assistances, um, get waivers and feed for the YMCA so I can take my showers and stuff like that. So, I, I made, I made, I made it out, you know, through, through the struggles, even though I couldn't find housing out there. I was trying to figure out why, what was the housing issue? And when I talked to the city workers over there, you know, of course, there's a lot of for-profits and nonprofits that come into play to alleviate the affordable housing or alleviate the, the homelessness issue. Um, but I bring, that's a whole long story that I could talk for days about, but I, I, I bring that up to say that, um, I think affordable housing will always be an issue because when I, when I spoke to the, the deputy city manager a while back when I first started, I was like, what are, what are the biggest issues here in Kissimmee, you're saying affordable housing, of course, homelessness and et cetera? Um, I asked her how much, how much, at the time, it was, at the time, it was 69,000 people was in Osceola County or city of Kissimmee. Um, and then I asked her, I was like, how much homes slash apartment, um, complexes can we hold? And she said, well, each unit usually is about four and a half people. Um, I'm like, yeah, that doesn't equal out. She, I was like, man, that doesn't equal out, you know, 70,000 people. So, like, there's always going to be, there's always going to be homeless people, no matter what. Um, so the, I'm still going to follow what, because of when I spoke to her, she, she told me all the different affordable housing plans that they have put in plan from the, the five-year plan from 2020 to 2025. And, uh, I'm still going to follow those. But I also, for me, here's a, a one thing I want to do, what I learned from San Francisco, where I'm from, New Orleans, they're starting to build up. So, you know, I haven't seen an apartment complex here in Kissimmee that's over two or three floors. So, that's a, that's an idea, but I also know that whenever I lay anything out, there's also, there's always the pros and cons. I know that Osceola County and Kissimmee as a whole is a very old-school, traditional town to where the residents don't want to see big buildings, tall buildings, skyscrapers and et cetera, um, or whatever it could be. So, and I also know that there's the airport as well as the, the city Kissimmee airport. So, you can't build certain things, certain height around the certain radius of the airport. So, but I feel like if you build up, because if we don't, we can't build out unless the farmers in Osceola County decide to give up some land, right? And I love farmers, by the way. I, if you see, I have my, uh, my, my farmer, my farmer, but, you know, um, you know, if, if we can't build out, right, because we have. You know, if if we can't build out, right? Cuz we have a lot of land for sure, but I don't know. And I don't know nothing outside of, you know, I don't know much about the St. Cloud and Harmony side. But, you know, if they're not residential lands, if they're all commercial. And they don't sw- switch zoning to residential and we're not gonna build out, we have to build up in order to create more housing for. Uh for anyone to come in, to move in, you know, cuz if we don't build out or if we can't build out and we don't build up. Then we'll always have an affordable housing issue cuz we can't build enough houses for. The growing population that we have, cuz we're at seventy three, seventy four now, seventy four thousand, I believe. And only for in two thousand sixteen, it was sixty nine. So we're growing a lot and I don't know, I don't know, me personally. I don't know how we can truly fix the affordable housing if we don't start to build up and if we can't build out. I think it will always be an issue personally. I think will be more so of a of a solution will be the. To the the ways to alleviate the homelessness issue while you're homeless, the things to do, like this is what you could do, do the resources you could uh go to. Um you know, Hope Community Center, all all these different um resources and kind of funding those nonprofits and funding those organizations that help. Um those who are trying to get affordable housing during during those times, I think that's more key than. The for, cuz it's always gonna be an issue cuz it's it's always gonna grow out. We can't build enough, like I we can't build fast enough. And I think that the way we budget money, oh, I don't, I'm not too sure exactly how they've been budgeting for the past ten years back when Jim Swan was mayor. But, you know, if you don't put money into the affordable housing and there's other, there's other departments that need money as well. It's gonna be a long, it's gonna be a long shot until we say affordable affordable housing or the city of Kissimmee is affordable, you know what I'm saying? And with downtown with the lake and all the attractions that we have tourism, is the fair market is always gonna be high in 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 the city of Kissimmee because we have Disney World.
Uh that's a that's an interesting point you make. Um and it's interesting to see all of like the outside influences that are involved in like.
It's a lot, yeah.
So I wanna, cuz you talked about, and I I wanna pause to say that I I appreciate you bringing up your experience with homelessness. I know that's not an easy thing to bring up, an experience to bring up, but I think it's important and it gives you some perspective on this. And one of the things that you said um that I wanna talk about is that you said that um. Being a being a person that was homeless, you were knowledgeable about some of these resources that were available. And I guess m- my question is, how can um elected officials make it so that the residents who who are in need of these resources? How can they um the elected officials like teach the residents about these or how can they get the word out? Like how can you stay connected to those people that really need the resources?
Right, right, yeah, for sure. I I think I think a way, there there there's numerous amount of ways, like, you know. Even even with the sign, you know, I don't know if we ever drive down John Young or one ninety two. Um there's usually, I think there's one on John Young and uh John Young in 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 Carroll, John Young in Columbia. There's like a sign and there 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 numerous places as well, but the sign will say no panhandling. Um it's okay to say no, and then it has it has a number, like if they're pan, if they're, if you see someone panhandling, call this number. For help or some or assistance, something something like that. I feel like we can create a sign just like that or put that sign or enlarge that sign and say. Here are all the nonprofits that service or assist homeless people. If you need food, if you need whatever it could be, this is what you gotta do on the on those same signs. So at least, I mean, some homeless people do have phones and some homeless people do, you know, have uh ways to contact wherever the occasion be. And they can call that number. At least they have a visual instead of this one number that's on that sign. It's just a number to call and doesn't have no, doesn't say what organization it is or whatever it could be. So I think signage is key. Um any signers that's on the outside like we have, I'm pretty sure you can set aside, could budget some money. Allocate the money to create signs at local, uh you know, um not say local, but homeless hubs, like, you know, in the John Young, one ninety two area. Um the 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 camps where the homeless set up at. And uh put those signers there and say, hey, these are the places you can go and just have kind of like a a a a team. Similar to like what Community Hope Center does, the Hope um the Hope Center on one ninety two. Uh what they do, you know, they go out and they know where the homeless people are at. They go out and they 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 reach out and they try to provide the services. They tell them where to go. They tell them to. Try to come back to the to the um the center and get food or get clothes and prepare them for interview, whatever it could be. So it's like simple things like that and just having a, I think, if if the city had a team and not uh depend on the nonprofits. I mean, it's either way, you either fund the nonprofits to do more or hire more or you as a city Kissimmee, as a city could do it, you know, and and have a. Commission of a co- a a uh subcommission of people who. Uh a board or say who will go out and kind of do that vol- volunteer work per se, or if we have budget to to pay them to do that. Cuz I think that's that's more needed than. When you're when you're uneducated, like some of these homeless people either, you know, dropped out of school maybe or didn't go to college or whatever it could be. Um you really, it really dawns on you because you don't know where to go. And then when it comes to people, the people, the regular citizens. Some some of them are scared of the homeless people, so they're not gonna wanna talk to them. Um they they think that, you know, they're gonna harm or whatever it could be. So a lot of the homeless people usually just congregate within themselves. And if none of them are educated, then it's like they're not going anywhere. They're not going. They're never gonna, they're always gonna be homeless, you know what I'm saying? And unless, and the Community Hope Center, the Hope Center um is only, it's only one, you know, that's only, it's only so much nonprofits that can do so much. Like the population is too big. There's not enough nonprofits to say, sir, all of them. So it's gonna take like kind people. Um like myself, like I don't mind talking to a homeless person, shaking a homeless person's hand. Like I don't mind having that conversation. Because I was, when I was homeless, I was either in Starbucks or McDonald's and the homeless people who were, who were there right there with me, like they they had their things in the cart, right? They had things on a bag. And I didn't, like I said, I didn't have it as as bad as them cuz I had my car. But, you know, majority of my time, cuz I was still in school online. I was doing graduate school as well, so that's why I used to go to Starbucks and stuff like that, but they would all be there. And I had a conversation with them and there, some of them were very smart. They just lost a job and and, you know, in California, if you lose your job. If 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 rent is thirty five hundred and you lose your job, and you got a month to pay it, like you can't, it's hard to bounce back off of that.
Yeah, that's something that like stuck out to me in California. When I went, I would drive around and I would see a homeless person coming out of their tent. In their full professional work outfit. And it was just kind of, and you can tell that it was a matter of. They didn't, you know, they, the rent was, they just couldn't afford the rent. They had a job. They had their transportation to get there, but. They're coming out of their tent with their professional job and it 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 was very different and it's it's, you know, it can happen here Kissimmee. It can happen here and it's very close. Um but we we're kind of like around, like about to end our interview. So I was wondering, do you have any last um mess, well, one before this? Uh we always ask our our interviews, what are your favorite places to hang out in Kissimmee or to spend time in Kissimmee?
Uh my favorite place in Kissimmee ma- majority of is is on Main Street. You know, I would say Lakefront for sure. Uh definitely love Lakefront and then, you know, Main Street, all my favorite businesses, you know, Kissimmee Main Street, of course, the Welcome Center. Uh with Miss Diane over there, Miss Angela, you know, Jeremy over there, uh the nearest historical, like all those, all those businesses, like I really love, like. You know, Main Street Pizza, that's my favorite pizza over there. I like Broadway too. Um but Main Street, all the restaurants, when I went down there, that's 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 kind of my area for me, Main Street.
Awesome.
Yeah, 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 that's that's my place.
I think I really enjoy that that area too. I mean, I mean, that's where that's where we meet up. That's where I've met many of the leaders in Kissimmee. Um that's where they hang out. So um I I agree. And my last question is, um. What is the one message that you want to let our viewers know before we sign off?
Um I just want my viewers to, oh, y'all viewers, but I just I just want the people just to be grateful. I think that's that's the key thing for me. Like I I know that um I can't really catch my, I can't find myself campaigning through. All the one, the pandemic alone, like it's really touching a lot of people. Like I lost my aunt to COVID nineteen, actually, like. So it's like, you know, you you you, when it comes close, a lot of people are playing around like, oh, yeah, like it's nothing or it can't happen to me or whatever it could be, but. It can happen to anybody, you know what I'm saying? So it's like, I just want people to be grateful. Like I can't see myself really campaigning out. Like on social media, like campaigning, like vote for me, vote for me. Like I don't really, it came to a point for me now, it's like I could really care less. Not say I don't care. Of course, I wanna win, but I just really want to do for the people. Like it doesn't matter if I'm gonna lose. I just want, I just wanna. Everyone to be safe and take the safety precautions and be grateful for what they have and start to cherish what they have and also start to be thinking innovative and not let this time. Uh bring them down, but how do we prevent more things? So that's kind of where my head is at. Um just to be able to bring everyone together, connect um the elderly with the youth, connect the races, the opposite races together, the genders all together, all come together. We all come together and we figure out um better ways to be, uh live in a sustainable city and better ways to, you know, uh live life just. As a whole pandemic or not, you know, so uh that's just, that's kind of my my last words. I just wanna everyone to be grateful and love themselves. And when it comes down to, you know, getting things done, just know that I'm overly willing to help out and volunteer my time. If I have the time, cuz I'm stressed out, always volunteering for something. So it was like, whenever I can, I'm always willing to help. So win or lose, like. Always reach out to me and on all my platforms, so.
I just, I just wanna express my condolences for your loss in this pandemic. Um and to, you know, let your family know that you, you know, that we're praying for you guys. And remember a thing, I know, I don't know if we spoke about this, but you have art behind you and that's your art. Can you speak on that?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. So I have a, I have a, I'm gonna see if I move my, show you a few s- few pieces. So uh that piece was my first big piece I did. Of course, that's Bob Marley, Malcolm X and Tupac. And it says, spirit like Marley or sorry, oh, yes, real like my mind like Malcolm and soul like Tupac. And then I have a few.
What medium are you using?
That's acrylic.
Okay.
That is acrylic right there. And then that's Obama and Martin Luther King over there. And then these are a few, this is Ahmaud Arbery. That's the that's the kid, the boy who got shot in uh in Georgia. By uh those those two guys in Georgia. And then it's a few other pieces. It's a few other pieces I did down here. Uh another one, Breonna Taylor, that's Bre- Breonna Taylor who got shot up there in Kentucky. Um by the police. Uh this is Ja- Jay Shaw. He's the one who got shot over there in St. Cloud. Um by the police as well. And I know the story recently came out, but I had started it anyways. I'm gonna give it to his mom. Yes, and then these are some more kids. Um these are all young kids too. This is Bryce Goudy. He died from suicide down there in Deerfield Beach High School. And then this is T J Terrence Jackson. He got shot at his grandfather's funeral at Deerfield Beach High School as well. And then Alexis Marion died from suicide as well cuz her and Bryce Goudy were best friends. And this all happened in two months at Deerford High School on beach. So um I did a tribute for them, a memorial for them. I'm gonna drive it down there. Uh I'm gonna drive it down to them. But yeah, that's what I do. You know, I just, I like to do memorials and portraits of and bring up, bring up um. Issues that need to be addressed cuz after this COVID nineteen stuff is done, there's still gonna be gun violence. There's still gonna be suicide, especially with these young kids and young people. So I'm all about bringing those issues up cuz I think we need to talk about it more. If we don't talk about it, then it's just gonna be brushed under the table and it's always gonna continue to happen. So. Yeah.
Issues and we and we have a lot of work to do. So uh and I appreciate the work you've been doing and you talked about gratitude and, you know, we, I I know I can, I can't speak for Dora, but I am grateful for having you and. For having your experiences and for you being able to share some of your experiences with us and our viewers. So thank you so much.
Thank you. I appreciate.
Thank you so much, Alvin. I really enjoyed listening to your interview. That was amazing and I look forward to working with you in the future.
Oh, yeah, we 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 go definitely give a touch. Thank you. I appreciate you all.